Good evening and welcome to tonight's forum for the city council seat for Ward 3. Tonight's forum is sponsored by the Legal Women Voters Minneapolis and is broadcast live on Facebook. The Legal Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. We do not support specific candidates or political parties. Tonight you will hear from three candidates for the 3rd Ward Council seat. The 3rd Ward is located in downtown and northeast Minneapolis. The Ward 3 includes some of the city's oldest neighborhoods, including Marcy Holmes, Nicollet Island, and St. Anthony. It also includes some of our newest neighborhoods in the Mill District in the north loop. The 3rd Ward includes and is sponsored tonight for this forum by the following neighborhood organizations: Neighborhood Associations of Beltrami, Botno, Marcy Holmes, Nicollet Island East, St. Anthony East, Sheridan, and St. Anthony West. I want to thank the candidates for running for city council and for putting yourselves out as city members and people who want to see our city get to be a better place. Our three candidates tonight are Steve Fletcher, Merth Moorhead, and Michael Rainville. My name is Pam Tulane and I'll be your moderator. And we are joined tonight by Jane Papa Giorgio, who is our question sorter, and she's been helped by Mary Ann Naples, who is not here tonight. Our timekeeper is Whitney Larson, so Whitney will be the one that will be watching most tonight. I also want to thank the A Mills Artist's Office for donating this wonderful location. I wish that you could look around it, it's really a beautiful location. And I want to thank Chris LaRusso, who is a member of the, one of the councils that are helping put this together and who arranged to get this building for our event tonight. And last, I want to thank Serene Saad, who is doing our camera work and who is a member of the uptake. And we'll be putting this on the Facebook where you can access it later and also hopefully be able to put it on the main website so that people can access this to be at a later time on our website. To the audience, I want to tell you that you can submit more questions, although we have many, many that have already been submitted. And when you do, please make sure that your questions are not addressed to any one particular candidate, but are available to all candidates. The format for tonight is that each candidate will get two minutes for opening statements, and then when we begin the questioning, you get a minute and a half for each answer. And then we will end with two minutes closing statements. We'll go in the same order and for you to know that the candidates' blue numbers, and it just happened that they came in alphabetical order, so that worked out nicely, and we will rotate as we ask your questions. As you can imagine, there were many, many questions about many different topics. So, we'll begin with the questions. Our question sorters tried to get them to fit together, so we'll see how well we can do on this one. The first question is about government, city structure, city structure, government. What do you think of the current structure of city government in Minneapolis? Do you favor maintaining the city council control structure as it currently exists? Or do you support the strong mayor proposal put forth by a charter amendment which would be on the ballot? I can be the summary of that charter amendment if you want me to, otherwise it may be off the leaderboard that you may answer the questions. Yeah, first person to answer the question is Steve Fletcher.
Can you repeat what you want to say?
I'm sorry. Oh, we forgot, thank you very much. Yes, let's see, you will have, introduce yourselves. And so we will start with opening statements of two minutes, and during this time, I hope you'll tell why you're running for this office. I apologize. Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you for hosting, and thank you to all of our neighborhood sponsors and to everybody who's participating in our local democracy. My name is Steve Fletcher, I'm the 3rd Ward City Council member, it's been my honor to serve for the last four years. When I ran four years ago, I earned the DFL endorsement and I won the election based on some clear promises, and I have done the things I said I was going to do. I said that I would increase housing options, and we, especially affordable housing, and we have more than tripled our production of new affordable housing units. I said I would increase transportation options. Transportation actually making major improvements for walking, biking, public transit use, and driving. I said I'd be a labor champion, and I passed wage theft protections and a right to recall. I said I'd be a climate champion, and we've made major strides in local solar production, energy efficiency, and storm warning management. And yes, even before Derek Chauvin murdered George Floyd, I said we needed to change the way we do policing. We have a moral obligation to confront the ways that our system is currently causing harm. Black lives matter, and we have to not just say it, but act on it. I am committed to continuing to lead on the process we've begun to transform our system of public safety. I have done the things that I said I would do, and I hope that those accomplishments have all your support for reelection. The thing none of us could have known when I ran was that we'd be doing this in the context of a global pandemic. I believe we weathered the storm responsibly, we've set ourselves up fiscally and socially for a strong recovery for Minneapolis. But I'm also aware that many of our accomplishments and many of the things that we love about our city are obscured by the challenges we face under COVID-19 and by the things we've lost. And with all of the challenges and all of the complexity of this job in the year 2021, I stand ready and willing to keep moving us forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Merth Moorhead.
Thank you Pam, thank you to the Legal Women Voters for sponsoring this event, it's much appreciated. Since I'm new to the political arena, I thought I'd take a moment to introduce myself. Again, my name is Merth Moorhead, I'm running for 3rd Ward City Council seat. I grew up in Pittsburgh in a working-class family, my father was a Union Steelworker, local tenant 36, while my mother was a state homeowner raising three children. I was lucky enough through my experience that he was able to send actually all three of his children to college. I was lucky enough to go to Allagany College where I met my wife. My wife Tricia and I have been married for 30 years. We're lucky and proud parents of two young men. Our oldest graduated from the University of Minnesota, lives in northeast Minneapolis, and our youngest is finishing up his first year of his degree at Creighton University. College, my wife and I moved to Minneapolis with General Mills. I've been working for General Mills for over 30 years. With General Mills, I've learned a lot of amazing things. First of all, there are amazing people that work there. I've learned collaboration skills, which is necessary for city management, manage large budgets. I've learned how to listen with empathy. And I've also learned about servant leadership. And servant leadership is essentially making sure you're putting people into the right direction with yourself. And that's key to being this city council member for 3rd Ward. There are three things that we focused on. One is public safety for all. The second is making sure we recover economically from COVID. And finally, it's equity. How do we close the gap in homeownership and income inequality in Minneapolis?
Pam. And Michael Rainville.
Thank you, and I also want to echo the thanks that is heavily given to the Legal Women Voters. It's great that you're doing this, and how amazing to do it over Facebook Live, so congratulations to you on your use of technology. My name is Michael Rainville, and I've lived in the 3rd Ward all my life, and I've worked in the 3rd Ward all my life. And I'm proud to say I've been a Democrat all my life, reflecting the traditional values of the DFL party. I attended DLSL High School, I had a degree from the University of St. Thomas in Marketing, and a certification from Notre Dame University in nonprofit management. For the last 35 years, I worked for the Minneapolis Convention and Business Association, helping to create the economic engine that was downtown, that had 36,000 people working in that hospitality industry. I want to say that again, because you think about 36,000 residents in the city of Minneapolis worked in the hospitality industry prior to the downturn. But the positive achievements I've done is in my 35 years of service to the St. Anthony West neighborhood. So many of the neighbors watching tonight, you know me from the projects we've worked on, whether it's the Reds Theater, the streetlights, and bike path along 3rd Avenue Northeast through St. Anthony East and St. Anthony West, the Sheridan Memorial Park down on 13th Avenue in the Grand Bell complex, the BF Nelson Park, I have the EPA, I asked the EPA to come in and fix it. I have a multitude of successes, but I'm really interested in increasing public safety by not defunding the police, not abolishing the police, but by working with Chief Arredondo and his knowledge to improve the city. I'm also looking forward to adding more housing, I've had experience in that in the St. Anthony West neighborhood. Affordable housing is very important as are jobs, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Now we will begin with the first question, and we'll have, Merth, you will be the first one to answer this question. I'll repeat it again because I'm sure that I threw you off. What do you think of the current structure of city government in Minneapolis? Do you favor maintaining the city council control structure as it currently exists? Or do you support the strong mayor proposal put forth by the charter amendment?
Thank you for the question Pam. I'll base my response on a survey that was done by the Charter Commission. And that survey went out to all the department heads within the city. And the response came back unanimously that the city, the way the city works right now is not efficient, and it really isn't effective, and it lacks accountability. And this is unanimous across all of the different department heads. And the reason is, there are 14 different bosses that you're working with. So they're not quite sure who's responsible for the decision-making, they're not quite sure who's accountable for those decisions, and it seems that there are different people that are trying to influence all the department heads that just makes the city run terribly inefficiently. The charter amendment would change that. It would move towards a strong mayoral system, which means the mayor would have responsibility for setting the vision, the strategy, and also the follow-up for all those actions. The responsibility would rely or be based on the mayor. Now, the city council has a significant role still to play from a budgetary perspective and also from a legislative legislation. So I would be supportive of the charter amendment that would move towards a strong mayoral system.
Thank you. Michael, same question.
Thank you Pam. I too would like to see that charter change go through. We are a very inefficient form of government right now. We're one of the few cities in the country that has this system that was developed in the 1800s. It's a Scandinavian Northern European style of government, and it just doesn't work. There's not any accountability for either the council or the mayor, and there's no transparency. The city council is constantly yanking on the chains of the different department heads to get favors done in their area, and there's not a smooth way that the citizens can understand what they're doing. It's a good form of government, it would only improve the city council's actions and their accountability.
Thank you. Steve.
So I'm going to disagree, I haven't seen the language. I actually think that there's room to clarify legislative power and executive power, and I was hoping that they were going to generate something that did that, but what's ended up happening is that they've produced language that I can't support. And here's the biggest reason. A lot of the inefficiency that we're talking about, a lot of that inefficiency is democracy. And sometimes we need to let democracy be a little bit messy in order to get things done. That one of the things that's challenging is that if we concentrate all of our power in a citywide election, you can win a citywide election without talking to a lot of people on the north side. You can win a citywide election without talking to some marginalized voices throughout the city. And having more local, regional representation throughout the city allows for everybody to have their voices heard. And sometimes those voices all sing the same tune, and it feels great, and sometimes they are a little discordant, and that is actually democracy happening, and that is people getting their voices heard. So I think it's very important that we not take on the short side of measure that concentrates power in the mayor. I think a lot of the reasons people feel that there's a lack of accountability is because frankly, the way that the mayor is currently using his power has created some uncertainty. I think people have to ask whether we have, whether we need a strong mayor charter, or whether we just need a strong mayor. And I think it's important that people not look too much at the, at the, what they're looking at right now, to think about a charter that's going to affect generations.
Thank you. This next question is a follow-up to the one we just had. One primary concern that many citizens has that the organization of the city council lacks accountability. What changes would you support to provide increased accountability? And Michael, you answer this first.
Well, thank you Pam. So as I mentioned in the last question, the city council has not lived up to the standards of accountability that they've spoken of. And they're not transparent in their actions either. Part of this is hiding behind the COVID disease, but you know, going forward, our city has to prosper and get back on track. And right now, the city council is not responding to that, and that's why I'm running for office. I'm very disappointed in my representation in the 3rd Ward, and I promise to be more open and transparent and accountable to the residents of this ward.
Thank you. Steve.
So I actually think there's a great deal of accountability in the way that the council operates. We hold our meetings in public, we publish our agendas, we have every vote that everybody can go over and see exactly how we acted using the power that we have. And I think that's very important, and I think that that's something that people benefit from. And frankly, I've been moving to try to get more decision-making into that public arena, to get more daylight and more decisions so that more people have access to those decisions. Sometimes there's a difference between accountability and just disagreeing. And one of the things that's hard about the 3rd Ward is that just about any decision that you make, you're going to disappoint somebody, because we have a huge diversity of opinions. But what I will say is, I have been extremely accessible, we track our agendas and our topics, and we do our business in public. I think more of the city should do more of its business that way, and I think that's how we produce results. It's very important to me, as Paul Wellston used to say, everybody gets their say, not everybody gets their way. And I've worked very hard, even during COVID, to try to make sure that everybody gets a say, even if not everybody is getting their way in a final decision.
Thank you. Merth.
Steve talked a little bit about transparency, and having open votes, and talking about agendas. In my 30 years' experience with General Mills, we've had agendas, but that's not really the key to results. So what I would like to see is actually, what are the results of the actions that have been taken? Not only the vote, I understand that, because we want to know where the council stands, but also what are the results? If we look at the gap we have in equity in housing, we haven't closed that gap in over four years. It's taken 50 years plus for us to get here, but there hasn't been a result there. When we'll look at public safety, there's been no result there. Actually, it's getting worse. If you look at violent crime, it's been up three years in a row. Homicides are up three years in a row. So this is not about taking votes, this is actually about accomplishing the goals that are set out through the organization. And that's what I have in the city, is actually saying, here's what we said we would do, here are the results that we said we would achieve, and have we achieved those? That's what I'm interested in.
Thank you very much. Our next topic is about something you've all mentioned already, policing and public safety. Again, there were multiple questions, and we will ask several of them. As for the first question, this also, there also is a proposal that will be on the ballot in November. The city council proposes that the Transforming Public Safety Charter Amendment, which includes establishing a new department of public safety that eliminates the Minneapolis Police Department as a charter department, and establishes in its place a division of law enforcement within the Department of Public Safety made up of sworn peace officers responsible for the core functions of law enforcement. So the question is, what issues with policing and public safety do you view as the most important, and what is the ideal structure to allow the city of Minneapolis to best promote public safety? And Steve, you are the first responder.
Sure, thank you. So we have multiple issues that we have to address all at once. We have violent crime happening in our city, and we have a system of policing that does not seem especially good or capable at responding to it effectively. We also have a system that in the process of policing is causing significant harm, disproportionate harm, using force at a much higher rate with people of color, pulling people over at a much higher rate if they're driving while black. And we have to take responsibility for our role in a system that is broken and that is harming people. And so absolutely, I am a co-author of the amendment, of the Transforming Public Safety Amendment, that would change the structure, that would replace our current police department with a department of public safety that has a little broader mission, that works like every other department does, to have its legislative function managed by the council in the same way that the fire department and CPED and Public Works do. And I believe it's very important that we bring daylight to those decisions, that we're making critical decisions that we all should feel very concerned about the moral ramifications of. We're authorizing the use of force, we're authorizing arrests. We have to take responsibility for our role in that, and we have to all be accountable together, and not just leave it to the mayor and the chief behind closed doors to make decisions about how we're going to use those powers.
Thank you. And Merth.
Our children are dying. And when I say "our children," I mean our children in Minneapolis, North Minneapolis, South Minneapolis, it doesn't matter, these are all our children. Eighty-five percent of the homicides that have taken place are in the black and brown community. We need to find a way to address it. Now, when we say the police isn't working, the police aren't working, right now we're down over 25%. So as Chief Arredondo said during the budget, we cannot, we can only respond to things that are happening. We can't take proactive steps to get guns off the street, to have community policing, to understand when crimes are going to occur, and to properly investigate it. So right now, the MPD is a serious disadvantage because of the amount of officers that they don't have on the street. Now, I agree with Steve that we need to reform the MPD. I have friends that have been pulled over, I have colleagues at General Mills that have been pulled over for no reason. We have to fix that. We have to both be able to address the urgent issue that we have with violent crime and reform of MPD. But this is not going to be done without MPD as a critical role, that has a critical role to play in public safety.
Thank you. Michael.
Thank you Pam. So we are in a crime crisis here because we're not doing two things at once. We're not reforming the police, but we're not rebuilding it either. And the current council member got up on stage and said he was going to abolish the police department without asking anybody in the 3rd Ward. That was a decision that was made without input from us. It was a silly decision. And black lives do matter, I marched in that, those protests with my son and my wife, so we should be part of that movement to change our society. But you know what? Who's getting killed in the city? It's disproportionate to the black people in our community, the people of color. And that's a terrible, terrible thing. We have to rebuild the police department, while at the same time reform it. The council has had that opportunity to do that, they haven't done it, we need to take responsibility for their actions, and we need a whole new system.
Thank you. The next question is about community policing. Another important is B-Cop. Having a B-Cop is considered a component of most criminal justice reform policies. Do you advocate having B-Cops in the 3rd Ward? If not, why? And if yes, how would you specifically advocate for this call with the current budget climate? And Merth, you are the first to answer.
I absolutely believe that we need to have B-Cops. We need to have greater community engagement between MPD and the community itself. It drives familiarity, it helps people to understand what's going on in the community, and what may be going on in the community. We have to be able to address those. When you look at the 3rd Ward in particular, we used to have a substation here right across the street from Certics that hasn't been resourced. We have an opportunity over on the west side of the river for another substation that hasn't been resourced. So we have to find a way within the budget to properly resource these areas. When you look at the east side of the river, it has been disproportionately impacted by crime. And it's not just violent crime, it's also property crime. It runs different than what you see on the west side of the river, because we're seeing both property and violent crime. Property crime has actually gone down in the city, mostly due to the fact that there aren't many people in the city anymore right now because of COVID. But when you look on the east side, that is not the case. And if we get more community policing, I believe that will help to address the issue.
Thank you. Michael.
What a great question to ask me inside this room. This is where I held the fundraisers so we could afford to have both extra B-Cops in here because the city took away the funding for it. And this area has become very, or was very, very safe, it became safe because of those B-Cops. You cannot have police relationships if you do not know your police, your police do not know you. Right now, by using technology way too much, cops are going from call to call to call. The B-Cop, the neighborhood cop understands who's in that area, they know the businesses, they know the people, it worked here, I made it work here, I worked with the people on the side of the river to make it happen. We need to restore that, when I'm elected, I will restore that. To not have B-Cops in every business district in the city is simply silly.
Thank you. Steve.
Thank you. So I support the idea of that kind of sustained community presence, I just don't really know why it needs to be police. Like, we've been talking about community policing as a theory for reforming the police for decades now. This is not a new idea. And frankly, this is where we get to the real disagreement, is that, you know, Chief Arredondo had a vision for 400 more police, and this is what he was talking about, is he said, if you give me 400 more cops, we'll have B-Cops all over the city, and we'll have these great community relationships. And I don't think that what we really need to be investing in is to build relationships for the police. What we need to be building relationships with is for community, to keep each other safe. There's really no reason we start to talk about the kind of community presence, community outreach, the role that people are playing, that those need to be armed law enforcement officers. And so I think the shift in thinking that I advocate for, and that I think really is where the city is going, when you talk to people around the ward and around the city, is more and more to focus on, yes, community presence, yes, all kinds of community presence, but the emphasis on armed law enforcement is just not something that there's an appetite for, and not something that there should be an appetite for. Because we really can create a sense of community safety and focus armed law enforcement much more on actually responding to violent crime.
Thank you. My next question. Public funds from Minneapolis Reserve Fund were or will be used to pay the settlement between former officer Shoret and the Floyd family. It is not the first time the city taxpayers will ultimately pay for this type of settlement. Do you support liability insurance for police officers as a way to hold police accountable and shelter the city from bearing the brunt of the economic responsibility? And Steve, you go first.
So I love the spirit of that question, because I think we need to be thinking of absolutely anything we can do to create a sense of consequences, and to protect taxpayers from the out-of-control liability that our current system of policing is creating for us. It is not financially sustainable, forget all of the other concerns that we have about our system and culture of policing, because we are paying settlement after settlement after settlement. And what we have seen so far has been that the federal government has not been willing to separate us from liability. So it's not clear that we could push things off onto liability insurance even if we were able to mandate liability insurance in that way. And so I'm not sure it's fixed, that people are hoping it is, but it's absolutely important. The question is, how do we create accountability, and how do we shield all of us from liability for some profound harms that our police department has been causing?
Thank you. Merth.
As we look at the opportunity to attract new officers, that will be, from my perspective, a deterrent to bringing in the people, the right people that we want to be new officers. If you look right now, we're supposed to have two full classes of new officers that are in the pipeline. We're not filling those classes, because people aren't signing up to be officers at this point in time. If we put that on top of the current challenges that we have, we even have less people that are willing to sign up to be officers. We want the right people to be officers. I think as we look at MPD, we certainly do need to change some of the culture that's involved with MPD. That can be done by bringing on a new group of officers and having another pipeline that changes the culture. So I think it would be very challenging to bring on the right type of officers that we want into our community with that type of change to liability.
Thank you. Michael.
So Pam, that's a really good question, and I want to split the middle of here with Merv and Steve. Liability, what does that really mean? And how does that affect how we retain and recruit new police officers? Will the liability insurance be paid by the police officer themselves? Will it be paid by the city? Let's see the plan and act accordingly. But you know, to hold police accountable, the Department of Justice was in here in 2015, and they did an audit asking the city to improve the discipline process for the police and especially in the coaching area, in lack of discipline. And the city council had a chance to do that, and they never fulfilled it. They only complied with 3% of what the audit asked for from the Department of Justice, whereas cities like Chicago and Seattle were 20% or 14% compliant. The city council had the chance to improve policing, and they did not respond to it.
Thank you. This one has three parts. What specific duties would you want to see included as part of a public safety unit? What is the role of violence prevention in delivering public safety services to residents? And what, if any, functions currently performed by the police could be curtailed, should be curtailed? So it's kind of all tied together with if we go with a public safety model. And Merv, you're first to answer.
So as we look at all the duties that MPD has, I'm a strong proponent of the coresponder system. So I've heard a lot from our community that there are challenges, particularly when it comes to calls with emotionally disturbed people, calls for overdoses, calls for domestic violence. We need to have a strong coresponder system to go along with MPD. We should be looking at how do we fund that? Because it is critical. I think MPD would tell you, we would want to have some experts come with us. These are not always the safest calls. So we have to make sure both the responder and MPD and the people that are making those calls are safe. A strong coresponder system does that. I do believe that there's a role for violence interrupters. If you look at A Mother's Love, if you look at Mad Dads, if you look at those groups, I think they play a critical role to the fabric of our community and to public safety. So we should be looking to engage those groups as we move forward. From my perspective, the key is, this is not in lieu of MPD. This is along with MPD. To me, that's the great differentiator.
Thank you. Michael.
Yes, so I'm going to start with duties that should be moved away from the armed police. And the coresponder model is perfect. In fact, Chief Aradondo had established one in the fifth precinct as a pilot project that worked very successfully, working with Hempton County, because we have to bring in other government agencies to help us, whether it's the county, the state, the federal government. Minneapolis cannot have public safety all on its shoulders alone as a city. We have to ask for other help. But that model is ready to roll out to all the other precincts in the city, and then the budget got cut by the city council. They did not support Chief Aradono in his effort to have these violence, these coresponders respond to violent instances. So mental health calls, domestic violence, drug abuse, even traffic. There's got to be a way that an armed officer doesn't have to respond to a car accident. There's got to be a smart way to do that. Let's figure that out. And when you talk about violence interrupters, God bless the people who are willing to walk around in this community and talk to the most violent actors in here. And you know, as human beings, are very good human beings, but they're also very bad human beings. And that's who those violence interrupters are having to deal with. So we don't have to... Lisa Kellmans, Mad Dads, thank God that we have people like that that are doing that. They should be supported, and all of this should be funded. We are making a mistake by not funding our public safety to the proper level.
Thank you. Steve.
Thank you. So I do want to correct one thing Michael said, which is actually that the council voted to expand the coresponder model to all five precincts in a way that the mayor hadn't funded in the 2019 budget. So we actually expanded that, and the reason that it stopped operating was that COPE stopped sending people during COVID. So that service became unavailable to us under that contract. But just to be clear, that is something that the city council did support. I support us going further, and I supported funding full mental health response without armed law enforcement escort because every time we send armed law enforcement escort, there are situations where that will escalate the situation. And most mental health response calls don't require it. And the people who are best equipped to decide whether they need an armed escort are the mental health professionals themselves. And so I'm very excited that this summer we're rolling out a full mental health response that doesn't rely on armed law enforcement to escort them. I think that's the right call. And I think that we have, we set in place a sustained study, the 911 Work Group that we funded in 2018 that began its work and that began a list of all of the things that we think we could probably look at taking off of MPD's plate and shifting to an unarmed response. Every time we do that, we lower the possibility that an armed response is going to escalate into violence that we have to be accountable for. I support as much as we can taking a de-escalatory approach to relating to our own residents and relating to each other and funding those responses. And as Chief Aradondo said himself during the Derek Chauvin trial, 90% of what they do, it does not require an armed law enforcement response.
Thank you. We did get a question that came in through Facebook, so I'm going to take a minute from my script here and ask this question. It is about the scooter program in Minneapolis, in the Mill District. Scooters are left in crosswalks or thrown in the grass in parks. Many riders disturb the peace. They're being used for joyriding rather than transportation. What could you do to establish accountability and enforcement of the scooter program? And Michael, you're first.
All right, thanks for letting me be first on that one. How controversial. Well, you know, the program is well-intended without a doubt, but in my door knocking and in my outreach, people have concerns about the speed. In fact, be careful on these nice summer nights when you're walking across the Stonehenge Bridge because all it takes is two or three misguided young people racing on scooters side by side to... It's a miracle that it's not only disruptive, but people haven't gotten hurt yet. And the idea of, I've seen people in wheelchairs having to maneuver around scooters displaying in sidewalks. So it obviously has to be enforced. It's a new program, there's always going to be kinks, and I'm sensitive to that. But enforcement is a key. I just met with a supporter Saturday morning, and they asked, should I get elected? Would I allow for some type of enforcement on these scooter programs? And I said yes, because they should be. It's a great idea, but it's not being carried out properly.
Thank you. Steve.
Thank you. So we are in the third year of a pilot, and it really feels like the second year because COVID really almost doesn't count in this regard, just about everything. But what we saw, actually, was that the scooters were quite successful in helping people be able to rely more on transit, to use scooters for functional purposes that helped them extend their commutes or run errands over lunch in a way that made them feel comfortable taking the bus into work and not using their car. So we actually were replacing car trips and getting cars off the street before COVID sort of changed the patterns. We are continuing to improve enforcement. So the scooters now must be locked to something when they're parked. And we'll be escalating from notices to users through emails to actually the vendors starting to take away their rights to use the scooters, starting to freeze accounts, create some consequences so that the behavior stops. So the more, we are leaning on the vendors to do more. And there are places where we saw abuse, where we're geofencing them so that the speed is throttled down and people aren't able to speed around. So the speed is actually limited on the Stonehenge Bridge. Maybe not enough, we can talk about tweaking that. But we actually have made some improvements to really focus on safety. So I think it's a program that's very popular. The numbers speak for themselves. Thousands and thousands and thousands of people use them for all kinds of purposes. And it is something that helps people get around and that we want to continue to work out the balance.
Thank you. Merv.
Conceptually, I like the program. I've used scooters before, and I've come across the bridge before, and actually to a few different places. So I enjoy using them. I don't necessarily use them in lieu of a car. It's probably in lieu of I'm walking or I need to get somewhere quicker, which I think that's where a lot of people use the scooters. The problem that you have as far as enforcement is concerned is where people are driving the scooters. Sure, they're laying them in places where they shouldn't lay, but it's more of a public safety issue for people driving or walking on the sidewalks. If you're walking with strollers, if you're a disabled person, if you are a senior citizen, the people that are using the scooters are not using them, quite honestly, very responsibly. Sometimes, not everyone, but sometimes. But it's enough to cause a lot of concern with people. And so we have to find a way to monitor and address that issue. And that's the one that's sort of in the open. So do we slow the scooters down so they're not as, so people aren't as susceptible to injury? I think that's one thing that we have to look at. And the other is going back to the companies. If we see people that are using the scooters on sidewalks, we have to talk about them. They have a role to play in monitoring the utilization of their product. So we have to work with them to try and address the issue.
Thank you. All right, now we go to a topic that also had many questions, and I hope we can cover a few of these, and that is housing. Are you in support of or opposed to the Use of Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act, or TOPA, and/or rent stabilization or rent control? And the first person to answer is Steve.
Thank you very much. So I'm a co-author on the Tenant Opportunity to Purchase, and I'm doing that because I really do believe in it. I think that creating pathways to ownership is something that's very important when we talk about resolving equity issues. One of the big wins in housing that we experienced this term was something where we got a little bit lucky. We put some resources in it and we fought for it, but we didn't have the ability to actually make it happen, which was the preservation of affordable housing at Stonehouse Square Apartments and over at 320 Homes, where both of those buildings were put up for sale. And we had to find a preservation buyer. We had to make sure that somebody was going to maintain that housing as affordable. Now, if those tenants had had an opportunity to purchase so that they had the right to select the buyer and make sure that that housing was going to stay affordable, that would have created a lot of security for them. Whereas instead, they actually had a lot of insecurity for several months while they were waiting to see who the owner was going to sell to. And so this gives us the right to give tenants the first say in who buys their building or if they want to collectively buy it themselves and own it cooperatively. So I really do support that. I'm also very supportive of the Rent Stabilization Charter amendments that are on the ballot. I think it's an important tool. I think it's something we want to make sure that we get right from a policy perspective so that we don't overburden good landlords. But I do think that giving people the security and the stability to know that their rent's not going to increase by unreasonable amounts is important. It's an important tool in the affordable housing fight, and we have to help people stabilize their housing.
Merv, as far as TOPA is concerned? I think it provides a terrific opportunity for people to get to homeownership. The gap that we have in Minneapolis is second to none in the country. So we have to find ways to creatively close that gap. Now, if we give them the opportunity to purchase, it doesn't mean that other people aren't involved in that. We have to give the owners the opportunity to find a solid sale for them. So we have to make sure that there's fairness on both sides of the equation. As far as rent control is concerned, the charter amendment really says nothing. There's no plan. The only thing it says is, you have the ability now to come up with a plan for rent control. So I think it was actually not horribly written. It says nothing other than we're going to put something up to a vote. With respect to rent control, I think it's challenging because what it does is it creates a disincentive to invest in property. It creates a disincentive for investment to come outside and create more rental units within the city of Minneapolis. It hurts, it's helpful for people who are in their place currently and want to stay there for a long time. If you want to move to other locations, you will see your costs go up significantly. So I'm not in favor of, I guess, the rent control charter amendment as it is currently written.
And Michael.
Yes, so any homeownership opportunity should be put forward. That is, if it's chosen by the person, it's not for everybody. Renters understand that. And should you choose to not be a renter anymore, homeownership is a wonderful, wonderful thing. The city should encourage every way they can do that, and it will really help in acquiring wealth, intergenerational wealth, and help solve some of our equity problems. As far as the rent stabilization, I find that to be very interesting. It's great that it's going to be on the charter. It might not have to be on the charter because the state has floated some proposals around to limit rent controls to 6%. So you're seeing the state of Minnesota take an interest in this as well. But there isn't a city that's really done it well in the United States. I sat on a Zoom call with Neighbors for More Neighbors, and it was a housing professor from UCLA. And he talked about how, what a balance it was that there's just so many pitfalls with rent control that you have to be very, very careful. It hasn't worked everywhere it's been tried. So seeing the plan would really help me make up my mind. And the way to get more affordable housing is to build, build, build. And to do that, we have to involve the private sector.
Thank you. This one is a two-part one. How does homeownership fit to your view of affordable housing? And describe your approach to increasing affordable housing in Ward Three. Merv, you go first.
I think homeownership is critical for the city of Minneapolis. As I mentioned earlier, the gap that we have between white homeowners and black homeowners is the most significant in the country. We have to find ways to solve that issue. It's not going to be solved in a year or two, but we have to make positive steps in that direction. So as we look at that, we have to find different ways to get people into their first homes, their starter home. And if that's looking at AMI and saying, what percentage of AMI would we be willing to provide a down payment of? Would we be willing to provide a low interest or no interest loan? What are those things that we need to do in order to get people into their first home? Michael talked about it a little bit earlier. Is the best way to pass down generational wealth and close that income gap is to pass longer home. So we have to find ways to do that. And I'm open and willing to look at any way to get more people into homeownership.
Thank you. Michael.
Thank you, Pam. So again, homeownership is not for everybody. There are people who choose to not own homes, and that should be thrust upon them. But for those who would like to enter into that, it's magical to get equity in a place and be able to pass out on your children or even grandchildren. That's a great source of wealth creation. I have a supporter, a friend, Samantha Reese. She's up in Upper Northeast of Ward One. But she just recently glowed over how she got some help from the Urban League, both to understand what homeownership was and some financial help from them, as well as a bank. And she had a great down payment. We should be investing in people who want to be homeowners by providing that. A very interesting project, which I'm so pleased to see, is happening on Washington Avenue South. And that's a proposed apartment building, or condo, condo for sale units that are going to have modestly priced ownership opportunities in there. And what a great way. I think the city's making great strides in thinking that way. Perhaps a home isn't for everybody, a single-family home, but a couple-bedroom condo in a modest-priced situation is the way to go. So homeownership, it turned my life around. I've been a homeowner since I was 23. I struggled for probably the first 20 years to pay for it, but now that I have, I'm in great shape. And that should be afforded to as many people as possible.
Thank you. Steve.
Yeah, so I have fought for people to have access to homeownership for a long, long time. I was part of, when I was running Neighborhoods Organizing for Change and working for Acorn before that, we did all kinds of consulting with folks to help them get access to housing, to help them get access to loans, to help them get the information they needed to make sure that they were making a good decision for themselves. And then the foreclosure crisis hit, and we were out fighting the banks to keep them from foreclosing on people and help to keep people in their homes. And I've been on the front lines of that fight in many, many ways. Here's the thing, we have the Minneapolis Home Ownership Program. It doesn't often make the top five bullets, honestly, of our affordable housing work because it just can't get to scale. There are not that many starter homes being sold in Minneapolis in any given year. And so when we look at thousands and thousands and thousands of families who are struggling to find affordable housing and dozens of families who we could probably get into starter homeownership opportunities, it just doesn't feel like it scales. And so we have to be thinking about, this is why I'm interested... And so we have to be thinking about, this is why I'm interested in TOPA, because TOPA is potentially an opportunity to get lots of people opportunities to housing. And then it's why I am really interested in this experiment. I've been a big advocate for the proposed project that I hope finds financing. It's really hard to get a project like this off the ground, so I hope it works. But we've been really trying to support City of Lakes Land Trust partnership with a condo developer at 800 Washington, which is a city-owned lot that we own over by the Guthrie, to try to get affordable condos built, which would be the first of its kind, you know, like this. And I think it's a really worthwhile experiment.
Thank you. We're ready for another question, I hope. My system here has kind of missed her. What is your position regarding density of housing in Minneapolis? And what should be done for or against it? And I believe, Michael, you go first.
Okay. So density is a great idea, and the concept is wonderful. What a great way to use the existing sewer lines, the park systems, the transportation quarters. In fact, look in the area we are now, the density is working very, very well. I think that it has to be looked at, though. It's one thing to have a great idea, and another thing to see it carried out. And as I, I use a living example. I'm in the St. Anthony West neighborhood. And in the last three years, we've had 12 single-family homes taken down, and in their speed are over 500 apartments. Most of those are efficiencies and one-bedroom apartments, very little parking. We're starting to have a lot of vandalism in the parked cars and thefts. And how is this all working? So density is great. Let's see how it's being carried out via the 2040 Plan. In fact, the 2040 Plan is now being challenged in court. So there's a lot of discussions that have to happen, and let's have a transparent process where we can review what density is doing, because it's not working in every area of town.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you. So there are two ways that we can make an impact on our climate impact. We can improve energy efficiency of housing and buildings, and we can reduce vehicle miles traveled. The way to do both of those things is to build new density. We need more housing closer to each other, closable to walkable neighborhoods, closer to jobs, so that people can get where they're going, can take advantage of the vibrancy of the city. And we have designed a land use plan called the 2040 Plan that does that, and I'm exceptionally proud of that plan. We broke some real ground. Other cities around the country are looking to us as an example, are pointing to us and emulating our work, and we are seeing real benefits from it. It is obviously, anytime cities are growing and changing, there are going to be people who struggle with the very specifics of that growth and that change. But at the end of the day, the most important thing that we can do is we can say, here's our plan, we've all agreed to it, we did years of community engagement to get to this plan, and now we're going to stick to the plan. So we're not going to deny a building where it's allowed. We're also not going to approve a 20-story building where it's only zoned for eight. We're not going to give massive variances that create unpredictability. And so I think the thing that we need to promise people is that everybody understands the rules, everybody can play by the rules, whether they're buying land, selling land, living across from land. They know how it can be used and what's possible. And then we can build to a density that actually supports vibrant businesses, vibrant community, and a vibrant climate.
Thank you. Merv?
I think we have to look at density from a smart perspective, meaning that we just talked about homeownership and the fact that single-family homes are going away. Well, that's part of the upzoning issue that we have with the 2040 Plan. We're seeing single-family homes that are being bought by, that are side by side, those tracts of land, or then those homes are being demolished, and then we're getting a triplex, we're getting another building. And what that is creating is for those single-family homes in specific neighborhoods, the cost is going way up. So what that's creating is an even greater challenge for those people who want to buy their first home. So as we look at that, we can't have a one-size-fits-all that is density everywhere. We have to take a look at saying, okay, where are we seeing the need for single-family homes? Where do we have starter homes available? And how do we make sure that we have a balance between density and the opportunity for people to buy starter homes? Because right now, we're making a starter home, the pricing is going through the roof, because we're taking the inventory out of the system by bulldozing them and making them into triplexes.
Great, thank you. Well, we're going from density to parks next, big wide spaces, which we hope last. So the question is, what is your philosophy regarding the development of the Minneapolis Riverfront? And Steve, you go first.
Sure, thank you for that question. So first and foremost, we need to maintain our best-in-the-nation green space along the river so that everybody can enjoy it. And I think we need to extend opportunity and access up into the north side, where that stretch of the river has really been abused and poorly maintained. So I think we have tremendous asset. It's something that I enjoy daily, that most people who live in Ward Three enjoy daily. Our ward is really organized around the river. For development then along the river, I think it's very important that we're thoughtful about what it is and what it does, and to make sure that we're thinking about the riverfront as a real asset. So for example, you know, everybody in the North Loop always wants parking. And so when the Federal Reserve proposed a parking ramp right on the river, there were people who wanted it, because they just said, we got a parking shortage, we got to deal with this, you know, we need to build this thing. That would have been an architectural and ecological disaster to have a big parking ramp right on the riverfront. What a waste of one of the most beautiful resources. And I fought it, and we blocked it, and I think that's really important. And so the more we think about, how can we use the space, try to make it accessible to everybody. I want everybody to be able to touch the river. I want every kid growing up in Minneapolis to feel like the river is theirs and that they have access to it. And we're making incredible strides. I've been supportive of the Friends of the Lock and Dam Project, that's really trying to, as the Lock and Dam is disposed of, think about how to turn that into really vibrant public space. Our park board is doing their part with Waterworks Park. I think there's tremendous opportunity to continue making it just a beautiful, beautiful space for a long time to come.
Thank you. Merv?
Our park system is the enemy of the world, certainly in the U.S. It's one of the reasons why my wife and I moved down here years ago, is because of the park system that we have. And I agree with Steve that we need to make sure that we're developing the system, but making sure that it's accessible to everyone. As far as the riverfront is concerned, I think we should be developing that, but we have to make sure that the local community is involved in the development, and certainly reaping the benefits of that development. We've had people coming from outside of the community, outside the city, that have reaped the benefits of some of these types of programs. We have to make sure that this time, as we look at the development of the riverfront, that the people in the community will benefit from that, and they won't be left out. I've heard a lot of concerns about that. We just have to make sure, as a city council, that we're, that we're including the community in the development and in the benefit of the riverfront system.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. So as a metropolitan parks open space commissioner, I had got the funding changed, so Minneapolis' park system got more parks. I was very proud to do that and help get that funding to start opening up the central riverfront. I also served on the Blue Ribbon Commission, one of only two civilians, to establish what the Silt Riverfront Park System could look like. I worked with the Sheridan Neighborhood to develop the Moore Memorial Park with Ed Carville. BF Nelson I mentioned a little bit earlier. I actually invited the Chicago branch of the EPA to come in and test that ground. Park Board wouldn't touch it, because they were afraid it was polluted, as you can imagine a roofing company would do to a land site. And years ago, many years ago, I fought the Conductor when that first was proposed for the Upper River. So my family has lived by the river all our lives. We immigrated from here from Quebec City to work in the sawmills. And the river is a sacred part of our city. I will always protect it. I will always work with the park board to help them, whether it's funding or outside agencies to come in. And I look forward to becoming elected and helping the park board even more than I have as a civilian.
Thank you. My next question shows the wide range of things that the city council has to deal with. What is your position on increasing or supporting the increase of pollinator plantings in the city of Minneapolis? Merv, you go first.
Pollinators are key to life. I mean, essentially, if we don't have pollinators, we don't have fruit trees, we don't have growth of gardens, we don't have all these different things. So I would be very supportive of any way that we can expand the growth of pollinators within the city of Minneapolis. Short answer to a great question.
Michael?
I too have a short answer, Pam. I just invited everybody to go down Main Street. I took a leadership position, working with several members of the St. Anthony West Neighborhood Group. Linnea in particular was very helpful. And we converted six mediums, which is a total of a quarter acre of land, into a semi-rain garden. It allowed the runoff to not go into the street, and it became a garden for pollinators and bees. That was a great project. There was many people helped. I showed the leadership in that. I got the job done. I listened to everybody. And if you ever walked into Elsie's bowling alley, look at the flower garden on Seventh and Marshall, that cul-de-sac that Public Works doesn't have to take care of anymore. I do that as a labor of love for this community and for the pollinators and butterflies.
Thank you. Steve?
So we found something we all agree on. This is something the neighborhoods have led on, and it's been great. And I've been really, you know, playing a facilitator role on the council to try to make sure we open up as many opportunities as possible. So there's great examples all over the ward. St. Anthony West and Sheridan have worked together to try to get the University and Broadway intersection. We've got two of the intersections. We got McDonald's agreed to work with us on the third intersection. I think we might actually be able to get all the way around with really great plantings. And it is so beneficial for our ecosystem, for stormwater management. The Marcy Homes neighborhood has done a really good job of, you know, really using the boulevards and thinking about how, how we can innovate a little bit to get more rain garden into more spaces. And they've donated their, you know, labor and been willing to work on it, and we've been willing to work with them, and we're just, we're looking for more and more opportunities. I think it's, I think it's great. Our Public Works Department is learning from the projects that have been happening in Ward Three and developing policies to allow more neighborhoods to do more in the boulevards and more in some of the public realm where we can expand, you know, rain garden plantings and pollinator plantings. So thanks to everybody for all the work that you've been putting in, and this is something that Ward Three is leading on, and I'm proud of us.
Thank you. All right. The next one is sort of about the parks. It's about how will you, what policy positions will you support of the Minneapolis Park Board, especially encampments in the city parks, fireworks, and concerts that are impacting migratory birds and animals along the Mississippi Flyway? And Michael, you go first.
Okay. So as far as encampments, there isn't a single one of our sisters or brothers that should be forced into a situation where they're so unsheltered that they have to live in a tent in our park. And that, that issue should never come around. We should work a lot closer with the county, with the state to increase the bonding that Minneapolis needs to create more affordable housing. So we just stop upstream this living in tents. Doesn't help anybody. Parks are for people to recreate in and enjoy. It's just unfortunate that this tent living has happened. We have to stop it. The fireworks are interesting. There are two fireworks displays a year, Fourth of July and then Aquatennial. I never heard anybody object to those before or their impact. I'm curious as to what impact that would have on our park system. But the, the last question about the flyway, that's a great question. We are in the Mississippi Flyway, the largest flyway in North America, and our parks are so important for that, to be a beacon of respite for the birds as they migrate. As I walk along Goom Island, Niccolot Island, Hennepin Island, it's great to see the migratory birds. And I believe that's what the question was referring to, so.
It was.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Steve?
Yeah, so I would, I would hate to see fireworks and concerts get mixed in with the encampment issue, because that's such an important issue. So I'll just kind of talk about those two quick. I think fireworks became an issue last year, I mean nationwide. For some reason during COVID, people just decided light-melt fireworks was like a way to kill time, and it was awful. Like, it actually drove people nuts, and it's something that needs to not become a trend. And so I assume that's actually probably more of what they're talking about than the Aquatennial, in terms of what I heard in constituent feedback. And that's something that we're all going to have to socially enforce, and it's something that we're, we're going to have to, you know, think about ways to manage, because we certainly didn't get anywhere and aren't going to get anywhere with MPD chasing around every time they see a firework going off that's not supposed to be. It's just, it's, it's going to be hard to enforce that way. So, so I think that's an issue. I, I think we do have to manage the tension of wanting to care for the bird flyway, but also be a city. We have concerts. We were going to make noise. That's, that's part of, you know, how cities work and part of what draws people to cities. And, you know, I, in general, I'm going to support events, and I think it's important that we have gatherings and that we celebrate arts and give people space to, you know, to do those things. We can be conscious of how we use lights and how we, how we do that work, but I think that's important. And I do hope we get another question on encampments, because that's a major issue that we should, we should talk a lot more about.
And Merv?
As for the encampments, we have to have empathy for our brothers and sisters that are falling on hard times. We have to get resources out to them in order to help them transition from being in parks to being in stable housing. That's the first thing that we have to do. Get some groups out there, get people out there, give them the option. It's been challenging for COVID, because the number of places to have people move to has been reduced, because you just, you couldn't have the type of density that you really need. Now that we're getting past COVID, hopefully, we do a better job of transitioning people who are in trouble. And we need to understand that and help them and transition them out of the tents into more suitable housing. That will hopefully work better for them, and it'll also work better for the people that are going to the parks. So we need to be able to balance both of those things. With respect to the fireworks and the concerts, we need, the parks are there as gathering places that we can get together as communities. So I do think having the concerts there are terrific. It's the way that we celebrate. And especially coming out of COVID, I think people are looking for ways to get together and to celebrate being in a great city. So I'm very supportive of that. The fireworks, if they're legal, I, I don't think we're going to have police chasing them down. I wish they weren't doing it. As far as the, the, the other city sanctioned fireworks, I think they're few and far between. And again, it's a way that we can gather and have a good time with each other.
Thank you. This was another question that came from one of our viewers tonight, and it is about reinvigorating downtown. What are your ideas to reinvigorate downtown Minneapolis to make sure it comes back after COVID? Steve, you go first.
All right. So to be really clear, the thing that reinvigorates downtown, the thing that makes our downtown special and our city special is you. We should come back. The thing that makes it really weird to walk around downtown is when it's empty. And we are seeing so much planning for so many great events and so many opportunities to come down. I got to attend the opening of Cysta Co-op, which is a new business in the IDS Center over the weekend. And, oh my gosh, to see new businesses, to see people investing and taking the kind of entrepreneurial risk that's involved in that, to say, we know downtown's coming back and we're going to be part of it. There is new stuff to see. There are going to be all kinds of events. We've really signaled to venues and everybody that if you've got an idea for an event, we want to be as permissive as we can about block parties and really help everybody create reasons for people to come back and to come downtown. There's going to be outdoor events. We know, you know, Art World is opening back up, which is not downtown, but it's going to draw people into the city in a big way. So we've got all kinds of opportunities for people to start enjoying what you love about the city again. And I can't wait, and I can't wait to see all of you. And everybody coming back together is really what makes downtown downtown and what makes Minneapolis Minneapolis. So let's create as many contacts for that as we possibly can.
Thank you. Merv?
I think we are on the cusp of recovery, but it's going to take some work, because we've lost a lot of businesses due to COVID. And we have to find ways to attract more businesses, both big and small, to Minneapolis. With Target, with people moving out of that building, one-third of that workforce moving out, we've got to find ways to replace that. With people that have the opportunity to work from home versus coming into the office, that's a lot of people that won't be coming downtown, that won't be able to take advantage of all the things that we have available to them. So we have to give them a positive reason as to why. So we have to track smaller businesses, particularly minority-owned smaller businesses. Do we have to offer, again, capital investment to get them started? Do we have to have variances that will allow... Do we have to have variances that allow restaurants to get onto a sidewalk, to expand their space? The other piece that is critical is we have to make sure that people feel safe being downtown. We can't avoid that. I've talked with many people who say, I'd love to do more, but I don't get that feeling of safety. So we can't neglect that. We have to have a greater police presence downtown. We have to make sure that when people are coming downtown, they feel comfortable and they feel safe in the city.
Thank you. Michael?
Pam? Downtown is so needed for the city, for the state, and really for the region. It's the economic engine of Minneapolis. The tax dollars from downtown flow into the neighborhoods, and the tax dollars from Minneapolis flow into the state coffers to help support outstate infrastructure and spending. And 85% of all the visitors to downtown Minneapolis come from the five-state area. They drive in here for their recreation. Downtown must be revitalized. And I have been talking to building managers, and they would really like to see the city listen to them and to their needs and to ask them what can be done to help revitalize those businesses. So the city council has to engage the downtown business community. They're the experts. They're the ones that invest in the money. And lastly, I want to piggyback on Merv's comment about public safety. So many people I've talked to in the North Loop and the Mildred Districts say they can no longer walk downtown for dinner or to Target. In fact, the Target store closes at 6:00 PM because of the violence. It's the elephant in the room. We have to admit downtown is not safe and take the steps to make it safe, not only for us as residents, but for our visitors as well, or they're not going to come here.
Thank you. The next group of questions came from the neighborhood organizations, and don't forget, they're the ones who are sponsoring this debate tonight, so I think we want to make sure we get their question in. Neighborhood organizations are currently funded by the city budget. Would you keep them in the budget? And what changes, if any, would you make? And how would you be a champion for neighborhood associations when there are conversations about funding and partnering? And Merv, you go first.
Sure. I think the neighborhood organizations that we have are key. They're a fabric of our community. So we have to make sure that we are funding them. I think they're critical to getting communication out to people. I think they're critical to getting communication back from people in the wards and up to their city council members. As you look, there are opportunities for the city council member to work with each of the neighborhood communities. And they're terrific. They do amazing work. I was lucky enough to work on the Public Safety Task Force within DMNA. They do terrific work. They communicate information about new businesses. They communicate and put together events in the parks. They are really the backbone of our city. So we need to make sure that we are properly funding all the neighborhood associations.
Thank you. Michael?
Pam, thank you. So I'm a product of neighborhood organizations. I served for 35 years as a volunteer in the St. Anthony West Neighborhood. I did not run for office this year because I didn't want to have a conflict with running for public office and serving on the board. And the neighborhoods over, under this current city council have been having their funding cut back and cut back, and that's just not right. The creativity that is the city, that is the dynamics where there's a park system or development, comes from the neighborhoods. They should be listened to. And should I get elected to office, I will listen to the neighborhoods, I will restore their funding, and I will honor the wisdom that comes from neighborhood groups.
Steve?
Thank you. So, you know, I'm a big supporter of the Neighborhoods 2020 Plan, and I think there, you know, there are sort of two things that have gotten conflated. One is that funding got cut to just about everything this year because of COVID, and neighborhoods were among that. But I think as funding gets restored, I think it's very important that we create structures for neighborhoods to participate in activities that are part of the city's equity and outreach goals, so that we're all moving together and moving in a common direction. I think that there are activities by some neighborhoods that are spectacularly cool. The Sheridan neighborhood runs a community garden in cooperation with the mosque and with a local brewery. And it's like one of the coolest things, you just like, you hear about this, and the kind of relationship building and knocking down barriers that's happening where people weren't previously talking to each other has been really awesome. At the same time, there's a lot of neighborhoods that are engaged in activities that are nice, that are social, but I can't really justify asking taxpayers who are renters, who aren't served by the activities, who don't feel included in the activities, to subsidize them through taxes. And so I think it's very important that we create some accountability structure, that we create some basic guidelines about how do we live up to the equity values that our city holds? How do we make sure that we're including everybody? How do we make sure that we're not a neighborhood organization that has a vibrant homeowners' association committee but not a renters' committee? How do we make sure that we really do the work in a way that aligns with our city's values? And I think we can fund a lot of that work as long as we get it aligned.
Okay, thank you. And Merv, you answered this time, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I had that down, and I pressured my mark here. I apologize. Okay. The next question is about immigrants. What should the city be doing to welcome and protect our immigrant population? Michael, you go first.
Thank you. We should be doing whatever we can, asking immigrants what help they need. We should include the immigrants in our decision-making and just even the simple things. So I want to tell a pretty story. I'm so proud of my St. Anthony West Neighborhood. We do a little program in Indicent Park for the kids in the summer. Nothing big, some puppet shows, magic shows, but it's a way to get families together and children together. We started noticing, and it was, and I want to call out Pete Kumatis on this, he was very helpful in this. We started noticing that we had a lot of Somali and Latinos bringing their children to the park, and it was a big language barrier, but once the show started, the children just enjoyed themselves, and you could see the parents talking to each other. So we started making our little neighborhood announcements in Somali and Spanish languages. So a simple thing like that brought in way more immigrants into our Indicent Park program because they felt welcome. That's a little thing that we can do, but there could be so much more. And to become a safe place for people to prosper is a wonderful thing for the city. The immigrants have been the lifeblood of Minneapolis. I come from a family of immigrants, were many generations removed from immigrating here, but it was that success and the willingness to raise our children in a peaceful environment which Minneapolis can become that allows for our great immigration record.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you. So we have such a wealth of experience and culture in Ward Three, and there's a lot that we need to do to make people feel safe participating in our processes. So, and just to be real about it, I love cultural events and I love getting people together and building relationships, and yes, we have to do all of that. But people felt terrified when they saw military equipment in our city. If they had come from a place that experienced that equipment, I heard from a lot of people who said, this is awful for us. Like, if you're a refugee from war and you come to a place and you're seeing barbed wire and you're seeing tanks and you're seeing people in camouflage, that was triggering an awful for a lot of people, and I don't think we took that experience seriously enough as a city. We explored all kinds of ways that we could make sure we weren't collaborating with ICE. We were doing our absolute best to not be collecting data. A big part of the data privacy work that I'm doing is making sure that we're not creating data trails on people that would endanger them, because our city is not currently aligned with our federal government's policy on the way to treat human beings who are in our country and are part of our community. So I think we need to be doing everything that we can to increase the opportunities to participate, to make sure that we're not re-traumatizing people with the systems that we create around policing and sort of militarized presence, and make sure that we're not subjecting people to potential harm from other elements of government.
Thank you. Merv?
Immigrants are what made America what it is. Immigrants made Minneapolis what it is. So we have to be absolutely welcoming to everyone who comes to our country in order to find a better life. That's what America is supposed to be about. So when we look at people that are trying to start new businesses, but they don't have access to funds, or there may be an issue with them going to banks to get loans to start businesses, we have to think of a different way to help them get those businesses started. We have to reach out particularly to younger children as we see opportunities to invite them to different activities, because that's really where it gets started. We have to get the younger folks involved in all that's available in the city of Minneapolis. So it's critical for us to get together and to learn how to not only live or tolerate each other, but to respect and welcome everyone. We've seen issues with Asian hate. We've got to be very straightforward and call out those situations when we see them, so people understand that it is just not acceptable for those types of things to happen. And it's not just Asian hate, it's any type of group that we see being abused. We have to be able to call that out as a city.
Okay, great. Thank you. We've come to the end, according to my clock. I don't think we can get another question in plus our final statements. So we're going to go to our final statements, but I would like to have you, when you think about giving your final statements, tell us two things. One, why have you chosen to run for this office? And two, is there anything about you that none of us would ever guess? And we'd like to know something different about you that nobody maybe has known about up until this point. So we will start with Steve again. It's your turn to start. Two minutes.
Something no one would guess. All right, well, we'll start with somebody close here. So, because the why I'm running is an easier question. The why I'm running is that we've started a bunch of very important work that we need to finish. The whole world is watching us to see what are we going to do. We didn't choose this role. It was chosen for us by someone in a Minneapolis uniform murdering a Minneapolis resident on video. And many, many problems before that. We know that we have things that we have to fix, and we have started on a path that is important, that is meaningful, and where we have the opportunity to build a system that is safer, that is more just, that connects each other to each other in a much better way. We can build community. Community can keep each other safe, and we can build the systems that actually facilitate that. And in order to do it, we have to have people who believe in that vision. Do not let yourself off the hook as someone who cares about racial justice by believing that we can just defer to the chief, make a couple of changes, a couple of minor reforms, and actually produce the changes that we need. It is critically important that we continue on the path that we're on. We have a climate crisis to overcome. We have a public safety crisis to overcome. We have work to do. We have an economy that needs to recover, and a lot of people who have fallen through the cracks. This is hard work. It is complicated work, and I am here for it. I guess one thing that a lot of people haven't probably figured out about me yet, so I used to work in the film industry, and I actually just got immediate contact. Somebody asked me, is this you on IMDb? Did you work on Mitch Hedberg's movie? And so, yes, I was a grip on a locally shot movie called Los Central Lattes. And it went to Sundance. It's kind of a fun thing.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Merv?
Thank you very much, Pam, for your time and for the questions the city gives. So thank you. It's much appreciated. Why am I running for Minneapolis City Council? I believe honestly that our best years are ahead of us. I think that we are challenged with public safety issues. I think we're challenged to recover from the economic, from the economic impact of COVID, and I think we're also challenged with equity issues. But I think together, we can solve all of these issues. It creates a better Minneapolis for everyone moving forward. From a public safety perspective, I am not a defund and abolish. I do believe that NPD plays a critical role in public safety in Minneapolis. Do I also believe that there needs to be changes to NPD and there needs to be reform? Absolutely, I do. I want to make sure that when my children come back home, they're safe going anywhere they want to go in the city. I want people to be able to walk and go to dinner with their families anywhere in the city at any time. I also want to make sure that the folks that are living in North Minneapolis and South Minneapolis, those parents don't have to worry about their children walking down the street, not only because they may be fearful of NPD and they may be pulled over, but also the fact that we have crime that's going through the roof in those areas. So we have to be able to balance both. We're dealing with the economic impact of COVID. We have to get the economic engine running again, and that also has a role to play with public safety, but it is how do we attract more businesses? How do we attract more people to come downtown? And then finally, equity. We've had a persistent issue with homeownership that we have to address. We have to close that gap. That's why I'm running for city council. Just real quick, I was a roadie for Steppenwolf for a little bit when I was younger, so brief, brief period of time. And while in college, I was able to dunk a basketball. So you may not see that.
No, no way. I don't know.
I'm telling you.
We certainly all tell the truth tonight.
I'm surprised I played with it.
All right. And finally, Michael?
All right. So I'm running for council because I was raised and educated to help my community, and that's what I've done all my adult life. And I started to rattle off all the things I've done here, whether it's Marcy Holmes, Sheridan, St. Anthony West, St. Anthony East, Niccollet Island. And I've done that as a volunteer. If I had the power of elected office, I could do even more. And I would get this city out of the crisis that it's in. I would make sure the city council is accountable, just as the Minneapolis Police Department should be accountable. The city council should be accountable for success, and we are not being successful right now. That's why I'm running. The results speak for themselves. That's what a city council member should be judged on. The results are not here in the third ward. We are not better off than we were four years ago, and we need a new city council member to do that. Something about me that probably people don't realize, two things, they both evolved around bicycles. So many years ago, Congressman Obestar brought some funding, about $24 million, into Minneapolis to start a series of bike, commuting bike trails, to use bikes as a commuting tool. And I was chosen to represent the east side on that task force. So I helped create those bike lanes along Fifth Street and especially on Fifth Street and Broadway, where it's the first light where you could push and a bicyclist could stop the traffic on Broadway. So I'm very proud of that. And I'm also very proud of when you see public safety, the use of bicycles for police patrol and to be a part of our community. Mary Jane Partika of St. Anthony East and I wrote a grant in 1990 where we started a bike program in St. Anthony East, St. Anthony West, and Niccollet Island, and that served the business community as well, lowering the crime rate and getting police officers to know our citizens, who worked very, very well. And you see that today. When you see a cop on bike today, I want you to think of Mary Jane Partika of St. Anthony East. She was a great wrist, a very smart wrist. She could write a grant.
Thank you so much to our three candidates, and thank you for being on time and watching our timekeeper and staying right within the time limits. There, as you know, as you can see on my table here, there are lots more questions to ask, so I would assume there will be more debates at some other time during the next few months. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters Forum Committee, especially Erin Hardy and Marilyn Consasano for your hard work in putting this forum on tonight. And thank you to all of the people who tuned in tonight to Facebook and who sent questions to our candidates, both before tonight's event and during the event tonight. If your questions weren't answered, be sure and ask them the next time they have a debate, so you have new and different questions then. And of course, I want to remind everybody who's watching to not forget to vote. This year, we will be voting on November 2nd, and early voting starts on September 17th. The selection will be ranked choice voting, and you may vote either by mail or in person. Thank you, and good night.